Okay, this time we're really live, 6:04.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call this Tuesday.
Yeah, that's true.
October 23rd, City Commission Work Session. Order and ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Mayor Pam Triolo.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andy Amaroso.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Maxwell is absent. Commissioner Omari Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Herman Robinson.
Here.
If everyone would please rise for the pledge led by Commissioner Robinson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one update, we're going to switch by request the order of items tonight, and we're going to make B-A and A-B. Is that okay by everybody?
Yes, sir.
All inotating motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. So we're going to start with Discussion of Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. Welcome.
Welcome. For the record, Mark Stowers with Department of Community Sustainability. This has been a long time coming, and I'm excited that we are where we are tonight. So what we want to walk through tonight is the current draft of the Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. But before we get into the draft, I just want to walk everybody through how we got here and where we are now in current status, and then we'll walk forward for the next steps. So in June of 2017, we got the first grant to begin this process. And that was the first part of the funding, but this story actually began a while ago when we realized that a key piece of our Historic Preservation ordinance was missing, and that was really the design guidelines. Design guidelines are commonly a partner or hand-in-hand piece with any historic preservation program. You remember last year, we did a major amendment to the code section to look at updating the preservation section of the code. And when we got through that, we realized, okay, the next piece is this design guidelines. And I remember Commissioner Maxwell was very adamant that, let's get something on the books, let's get something here now. And I just want to start by saying thank you for your patience to let us get to this point. Developing these guidelines is not an easy task, and I'm thankful to Dana and Kathleen, and we'll introduce them in a minute, for getting us to where we are. So we executed the agreement in December of 2017. We got Treasure Coast onboard. And if you remember, that was a little bit of a process as well. We went out for an RFP. To be honest, staff wasn't happy with the results of the applicants that we received. We doubled back. We said, hey, we can work with Treasure Coast quickly and easily. We had a phone conversation with Dana. We brought them onboard and got started. I say all that to say, to get to the point where we had the executed contract and Dana got started, we were about six months into the process already. So taking the time from when the grant was, the grant funds were issued by the state, to the RFP being issued, to getting it out on the street, getting it back, having to change direction, getting Treasure Coast onboard, we started. So it was a bit of a delay getting started, getting to the point where we could actually get on the ground and get this thing going. Dana's team, however, stepped up to the plate. They said, we're going to take you through this. And by June of 2018, we had a full, complete draft. To understand the work that that takes, a normal process for a set of design guidelines takes about a year and a half to develop. What normally takes about a year and a half, Dana, with his experience, with his team he pulled together, pulled this together in about five months. So I just, I can't emphasize enough the huge thank you we give them for really coming together and pulling together and getting this document where it is today. Secondly, and if I can brag a bit about this process and Dana's team, this is probably one of the better design guidelines that I've seen. It's impressive to look at the timeline that they've done it in. It's even more impressive to realize that in that amount of time, we have a very, very great product. So I'm excited to bring this forward to you guys now. We still have some tweaking. We still have some adjustments to do. We're looking at it now with you as a team. We will go back to the HRPB and have them go through it again. They were on a short timeline because we had to actually wrap up the grant in June and get everything to the state. So we wrapped it up, got to the state, we waited for the state's comments. We got very few comments back from the state, which is a good thing. We were going to take it back to the HRPB board, but then realized, no, let's get it to you guys. Let's have you guys take a look at it, walk through it, have this workshop, take it back to them for their final review, and then release back to you. So we're hoping to bring this back to you for one last time, and that'll be for your formal action on these design guidelines, okay? The other thing I want to just walk through very quickly, and this is a credit to the HR, the Historic Preservation staff, is we have been very successful in recent years in getting these grants. And you look at this list, and you think that's really great, then you realize it's not common for a municipality to repetitively receive grants from the state. So that means the state appreciates what we're doing, likes the program that we have, and appreciates the hard work that's going into everything that we've done. So we've been successful in receiving one, two, three, four, five, six, seven grants, leading up to the two that you guys just approved, which will be one, one we're very excited about, and that is the digital retention of our property records. If you ever want to come see it, stop by the office sometime. I'd be glad to walk you through. We have probably one of the most impressive property records collections that I've seen. They go back all the way into the 1930s and 40s with the original handwritten property cards and sketches still in them. We don't want to risk losing them, so we've gone after money. We've talked about this, to get them all digitally scanned in and preserved so we can hold on to them, and then we'll take the originals and put them in a safe location and store them. The other big piece that we've been doing, which you are well aware of, and that is the surveys of all the neighborhoods. And with the last grant that'll start in fiscal year '20, that'll be the last phase of that, and we will finish up the complete resurvey of all of our historic resources. So expect next year, we'll be coming back to you with a completed report of all the six districts and all the resources having been surveyed, okay? So with all that being said, that's where we are tonight. And I just want to give the time over to Dana and Kathleen to walk you through where we are and to walk through the document. And as this is a workshop, I'm looking for your feedback tonight so we can take good notes. We'll get this back to the Historic Preservation Board and then bring it back to you for a final action, okay? So with that, Dana, I turn it over to you and introduce your team.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Bornstein. My name is Dana Little. I'm the Urban Design Director for Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and we're thrilled to be here at long last. Thank you for those kind remarks. This was a, this was really a Herculean effort, I think, by staff especially. So we're really proud of the product. I will warn you, we have a lot of information for you tonight, but we'll try to move quickly and hopefully it'll be interesting for you. But what we want to do is walk you through a little bit of what's happening in historic preservation, why the program's important, and then of course, the document itself. Just real quickly, if you don't know, the Regional Planning Council is one of 10 planning councils in the state. We're four counties, which is Palm Beach, Martin-St. Lucie, and Indian River County. Commissioner Hardy actually sits on our board. Thank you for that. And we had a team of select professionals, Vanegas Architects out of Orlando, Stephen Fed Architecture out of Miami, and then KSK Kathleen's Lesnik Kaufman. Preservationist Kathleen's here with me this evening. She'll introduce herself in just a moment. But again, how did we get here? This has been a very important tool. Do you want me to talk about the major thoroughfares? What did I do?
It is historic.
It's all historic. Okay. So this has been, this has been a tool that's been missing, and I know you know that. I don't need to belabor it. But we saw it as an important opportunity to, and especially with Kathleen's expertise at the state, at the county, at the cities, to try to craft and tailor for you a design guidelines that not only met what the state's expectations were, and what we know is needed in the field. You know, your staff is the tip of the spear. They're the ones that have to deal with applicants, work with applicants. So tried to synthesize old or previous experience and previous work to get us to the point where we had a document that we could all be proud of. Now Kathleen, I'm going to turn it over to her. She's going to talk a little bit about historic districts in general and her experience, and I think it's important that she take a moment to talk to you about her experience because her pedigree in this has really made this process, we think, very valuable. So Kathleen?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for being here. I know six o'clock on a weekday is tough. But Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Kathleen Kaufman. And I haven't presented in front of you before, so I'll just take a moment to let you know what my background is. I have two degrees in historic preservation, one from Mary Washington College and one from the University of Florida. And then I started my career, I started my career at the state, actually, at the Division of Historical Resources. And I can tell you, your staff is absolutely correct in saying it's a very impressive thing to see how many grants you have gotten in such quick time. So you should be very proud of that. I have been the Historic Preservation Officer for the Town of Lake Park in Palm Beach County. I've been the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Fort Pierce, and I have been the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Miami. I was the Executive Director of the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation up in Tallahassee for a few years. And recently, before I left and started my own preservation consulting firm, I had spent 10 years as the Historic Preservation Chief for Miami-Dade County. So I've been doing this for a few years, and I, I know that historic preservation is sometimes a tough sell. And I know I have, I've been in front of numerous commissions, and I understand what you go through. You have property owners that are yelling at you through one ear, and people are telling you, no, historic preservation's so good, in the other ear. So about Lake Worth, you know your historic districts. You have six of them currently, and it's amazing how many resources you have encompassing those six districts. It's very impressive. But historic districts do add value. Living in a historic district, and this is the message we all need to figure out how to get across, that it's not anything to be feared or disliked. You do have a little additional layer of review, but the historic district does add value to your property.
That's a fact.
Huh?
That's a fact.
It is a fact. It is a fact. So this is just a funny little slide about Dana. This, this Dana. And he had recently done his ancestry.com, how, what makes up your ancestry. And the reason this slide is in here is because everybody has a very deep connection to their history, their own history, and it's sometimes difficult to understand other people's connections to their history, but your history is very important to you. And everything that makes you up makes you the only you. And it's the same thing with cities, okay? The city, your city is the only one like it. But the reason it is the only one like it is because of its history and the historic resources that you still have that remind people of its history. So just as with people, okay, it's all the different cultures and backgrounds and things that have happened, the events that have happened to your town that make your town unique. And so sure, we all, we have all seen this, right? We have all seen a strip mall with maybe an out parcel of a Chili's or some other fast food place. We all have that now in our cities. But the one thing that you all have that makes you you are the historic places. It's a very valuable commodity that you have, and you should be proud of it, and you should be proud to protect it. Also, I want to remind you, as I'm sure you know, that your property, your own property, does not exist in a bubble. What happens on your street, what happens in your neighborhood absolutely affects your property value. When you have a lack of code enforcement, when you have a lack of the types of codes that regulate what happens, what people can do to their properties, it can fall apart very quickly.
You need to say that that's not Lake Worth.
That is not Lake Worth. It is not Lake Worth. I certainly would not use a picture like that of Lake Worth because there are no pictures like that of Lake Worth, right? But this is, this is something that happens in other places. There's a complete lack of zoning. And when you don't have zoning and you don't have things that protect the neighborhood, you can have crazy things happen right up next to a residential neighborhood. Historic districts, so there is like an added layer of review, yes. But generally, all they're trying to review, all they want to do is review that what you are proposing to the building is not going to ruin its historic character or that it is going to be something that's compatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And you know, it might have corrected this, that it was supposed to be a Capri apartment and not the crappy apartments. Okay, these are actual examples from where I live. I'm from Coral Gables, Florida. This is the same street, even on the same block. I think you can kind of get the general idea of the size and scale and character of what this street is. And this is a brand-new house that went in not too long ago. It, when I first gave this presentation to your Historic Preservation Board, this house had been on the market for, oh, eight or nine months. And, and that was some time ago when I gave that presentation to your Preservation Board. It's finally, it's finally been bought, but it was on the market for so long, and I am guessing because it just didn't fit within that context of that neighborhood. You may love this building and you may love this style, but maybe that particular street wasn't the exact right place for it. And the next street over, actually, the next street over from this requested historic designation after that building went in, after that house went in. So this is also on, this is a different street, but these three examples are on the same street, even the same block. I think you can kind of get a feel for the character of it. And this is a house that takes up three and a half lots on that block. You know, maybe if you were on Star Island or in Miami Beach somewhere, totally appropriate, right? And that is, that is fine for the people that like that kind of style. But I think you can see how the lack of having any kind of review of, is it the appropriate style or character or size for this, for this neighborhood has really impacted it. The house across the street was on the market, I'm also a realtor, so I, sorry. I do know about the real estate parts of this. But the house across the street was on the market forever, and the homeowners had to eventually really drop the price drastically in order to sell it, probably because a lot of people didn't want to look at the house across the street. So this is just a little bit of what can happen when you aren't in a historic district. So this is Silver Bluff Neighborhood in Miami, the city of Miami. We're not in Coral Gables anymore. And these are some of the historic houses that are still there. Actually, a wood-framed vernacular and some 1920s Mission. And for whatever reason, this particular neighborhood has really seen this influx of what in Miami we're calling the white box scare. They are having all these very modern, very white boxy houses come into the neighborhood. Again, it's fine because this, this neighborhood was not designated as historic, but it has completely changed the character of the neighborhood.
Is it on the water?
No. It is not on the water. It's right off Coral Way, very, very urban, very residential. Some of you may know where the Shenandoah Neighborhood is, that this is right next to it. So when you asked Commissioner Robinson if I know this is a fact, like, I don't know for sure that it's a fact, but I'm pretty confident that I haven't been able to find, we have not been able to find any study that says historic districts decrease the property values. So you can find, you can find reports on this for many, many, many states, many different neighborhoods. The ACHP, the American Council on Historic Preservation, their website has links to a lot of them. And in fact, Miami-Dade County, my former employer, is just wrapping up a very expensive, very in-depth study on this very subject by Donovan Ripkema, who is one of the foremost preeminent economists in the county, in the country, that does this kind of work. And he does it internationally. So we're very excited to be able to have that for our own community because I'm always having to show other people's reports and studies, and it's going to be nice to have our own. So some of the common misconceptions about historic districts, they are not all evil, okay? You're going to kill the value of my property. We've covered that a little bit. I won't be able to make any alterations to my property. Simply not true. You can. You can do it. And, and staff is going to help you do it in a way that doesn't negatively impact the historic character. I won't be allowed to update my kitchen and bathrooms. Actually, historic preservation doesn't regulate the interiors. So you can do what you want to the interiors. You can modernize it all you want. I will never get through the permitting process. I happen to know this very fine staff, and our staff, in our, in the various positions I held, we always had an end with the building department because we're city staff. So a lot of times, we would be able to help get those permits through quicker or help the homeowner figure out what they needed to do to have those permits done quicker. And you're preventing much-needed development. These are also in Coral Gables. This is just a slide to show you absolutely can make changes to historic buildings. We do it all the time. All these people take advantage of the Historic Preservation Tax Exemption when they do it because it becomes quite valuable to them, and your staff is here to help you. There are very, very qualified people in the field. Um, there are very, very qualified people in the field, and so anytime there's a historic preservation planner position open, you often have people with multiple degrees trying to get that job. So, so you should, um, know that your staff is working very hard for you. What actually happens in a historic district? They often have lower crime rates than a neighboring neighborhood that's not historic. It stabilizes property values. It does require some design review for new construction if it's within that district. It offers an ad valorem tax exemption, if your city has that, and your, and yours does, you have, you have done that. A lot of times, it provides a special zoning variance, creates a sense of pride for the neighbors. Again, you have access to very professional staff, and it qualifies you for exemptions from certain code requirements per the Florida Building Code. So, your building, um, your building code, your building official does have the authority, hello, Commissioner? Does have the authority to waive certain aspects of the code if it's to help preserve parts of the building that are historic. Is this where you take that? This is quite the slide. Um, so, why do we need design guidelines? Where is she? Why is she?
I've seen this house before.
Um, even the best intentions and going to the greatest expense sometimes just aren't enough. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Kathleen. I think she's overwhelmed by the last slide, but it's true. I mean, that just to have some guardrails in terms of, um, you know, particularly in these sensitive districts, which are your historic districts. Um, so, we have been diving deep into, um, your neighborhoods, um, almost on a lot-by-lot basis in some cases, to eke out examples of the different styles that you have, this being Art Deco is, of course. And also to try to breathe some life into the history, that it's not just a punitive process, that if you have a historic asset, a historic home or building, and you are investing in it and you're nurturing it, you're part of this history. I mean, during this period of Art Deco, Judy Garland sometime, Somewhere Over the Rainbow was released in nineteen thirty-nine, you know? And the Lake Worth Historic Public Library opened at the same time, in nineteen forty-one, August, which is interesting, because December of that year was Pearl Harbor. So, your library opened just months before Pearl Harbor occurred. And to think about your buildings in your city and what the life that they have lived is, was some, was one of the intangible things that we tried to, that we tried to, um, to build into this document. So, thank you, Kathleen. Um, I'm gonna walk through the document itself, and again, I'm gonna, I'll try to go quickly and see if there's time for questions afterwards. Um, as Mark mentioned, the design guidelines were submitted to the state on July twenty-seventh. So, that, the requirements for that state grant have been met. Um, they have, uh, their copy, but it's your document. So, we can still tweak and adjust and add to it as, as we, as you feel necessary going forward. Um, I wanna go through this, now, some of this may be hard to read, I apologize, but I wanted to quickly touch on the table of contents. Uh, we talk about the history of the city, um, the history of each of the historic districts. We talk about character-defining elements, and I'll go through those. What style is my house? What are the ten bona fide historic styles within the city? Um, and the guidelines for how to adjust or, um, or modify those. We also created this timeline, which we thought was interesting, um, which starts with, uh, Mission Revival or Mission Style, uh, back at the turn of the century, and just sort of tracks the period of each of those styles, uh, your ten styles, and also gives a snippet or two about what was happening, um, globally, nationally, and culturally at the time of those, of those architectural periods. And that's in the front of your document. Kathleen, um, was, was incredibly important in helping us pull together the narrative in particular, uh, with regards to the, the, the elements of the different styles, but also the history of the city. I didn't know, for instance, that, uh, Lake Worth was originally called the Town of Jewel, and was platted as Lucerne in nineteen twelve, and it wasn't until nineteen thirteen that it was actually incorporated. That was after Flagworth Railroad, of course, came to West Palm in eighteen ninety-four. Uh, you experienced growth during the land boom, then you have a lot of historic fabric, which is, was meant to receive the, the World War II and post-war population increases in South Florida. All of that is tied to the architectural styles and the development patterns of your city. It's fascinating. Um, chapter three of the document goes into the, to the districts themselves, and Kathleen provided a very interesting, um, um, history of each one of the districts, because they weren't all platted at the same time, they weren't all developed at the same time. Some of them have a preponderance of one style or a couple of styles of architecture more than others. Um, so, we tried to go into detail there to give, um, you know, the, the context of each of the districts. Now, we spent a lot of time with your staff talking about who is this document for? Granted, the state gave us a grant, they're gonna get their copy, but truthfully, who is, who are we talking to? Um, and I think we all agreed that we're talking to the applicants, to your citizens, and that this is a, a, a vessel for communication between staff and what the program is and the applicants, those homeowners who are coming in, who maybe for the first time own a home, and are kinda freaked out now to figure out that they're in a historic district, and they wanna do things, and they have no idea where to even begin. Um, all they know is that now there's all these additional regulations that they have to worry about, in addition to finding an architect and finding money, et cetera. So, this is very much an educational document. So, for instance, um, this chapter, chapter four, is called Character-Defining Features, where we go through, and we simply define doors. There are different types of doors. There are arch doors, there are French doors, there are panel doors. You know, and each one belongs to a certain gene pool, you know? They may belong, the arch door may work for Mission Revival, it will also work for Mediterranean Revival, but it probably won't work for Art Deco. So, we're trying to build sort of a, a knowledge base with, with your citizenry, or those that might be applicants to the Historic Preservation Program. Roof materials, there's all sorts of different roof materials out there, and there's different sorts of barrel tile. You can have the Cuban tile that's applied with masonry, or the S tile, or, so, just to give everyone sort of a working knowledge, um, of what some of the different ideas are. Windows. Windows and roofs are probably the two biggest issues that your Historic Preservation Planners and Program run into. So, what do the, what does it mean when you say double-hung, or single-hung, or jalicy, or porthole windows? Um, so, we've provided this educational piece. Um, windows, what are they made up of? We even included some sketches to show the different parts and pieces that make up a window in section, if you were to cut through your wall. What are the elements that, that are your exterior surfaces? You know, stucco is appropriate for one style, but it's probably not appropriate for another. Um, wood siding on a modern house, you know, a mid-century modern, may not make a lot of sense. So, you know, everything has its right place. Um, but built, like I said, building a vocabulary here was, was important. Now, you have ten bona fide historic styles within the city. Um, I'm gonna go through these quickly. One of them, actually, you've got eleven, because the minimal traditional style, there's a wood and a masonry, but, you know, we'll, we'll say that there's ten styles. And we wanted to go through and provide detailed explanation of what makes one style wood-framed vernacular and another style masonry vernacular. So, we went through and we did these drawings, we built these drawings from scratch, based upon existing examples within your city or close by, where we could go through and say that with a wood-framed vernacular, you've got these type of overhangs, you've got these type of surface treatments. These are typically the type of windows. You might have this entry, uh, gable entry, um, over the front door. Uh, they're usually lifted up off the ground, and they're usually vented, because that was a way to cool the houses before air conditioning. Masonry vernacular of a different time period, uh, different elements. Um, so, we go through each one of these styles. Bungalow. Uh, bungalow is probably one of the most obvious historic styles. It's got brackets and doodads and all kinds of cool things on it, so, you know, it's easy to tell it's historic. Masonry vernacular, it's, you, you have to, you have to appreciate sort of the, the finer elements that are more subtle than, say, in a bungalow style. Mission is pretty obvious, I think, as a historic style. You have a lot of Mission vernac, or Mission, uh, Mission, uh, housing stock in your city. Mediterranean Revival, also one of the more notable styles, um, in easily recognizable historic styles, especially when they're authentic. And, um, Art Deco, you have a great collection of Art Deco buildings in the city, not just residential, but your commercial properties as well. And for instance, for us, it was great. I mean, my background's in architecture, I know what Art Deco is, I know what Streamline Modern is, but to really try to be able to define the difference between these two styles that are first cousins was, was, was a great experience. Minimal traditional wood and the minimal traditional masonry, again, the same exercise through each one of these different styles. Mid-century modern, you've got a great collection of mid-century modern houses throughout the city, uh, particularly in the north end. And then ranch, you know, there's a period of time where people may have said, well, ranch, is that really a historic style? But it has certain elements that are very unique to that style. Yeah, I'm sorry?
No, I said it was the dressing.
Dressing.
Ranch dressing.
You know, we started to do, well, stop it. Um, you have other notable styles, too, which, uh, may not be, there may not be a collection that's great enough of them to be their own separate, you know, style on the list, but Dutch colonial, Tudor revival, you've got a number of other styles that are really interesting, international style. So, I'd like to take a few minutes and walk you through what a typical section of this book would be, like, for instance, bungalow. What is, what is, and you have the book in front of you, but, um, in this chapter five, when you get to the bungalow style, there's an introduction into the history of the style, why it is what it is, the style described, what are the parts and pieces and the tectonic elements that make it what it is? What are its, what's its DNA? That was kind of this DNA slide, you know? Uh, the DNA of a bungalow is different than the DNA of, of a, uh, of a, uh, of a, uh, mid-century modern house. There's also interesting historical elements. Um, some of you may have heard of, you know, Sears and Roebuck used to sell house plans. Many of those were bungalow style, or, or, um, uh, yeah, bungalow or craftsman style. Um, of course, we already saw this, you know, identifying the parts and pieces that make this who it is. Um, and then we provide a gallery of examples. I would say, I think, about ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of all of the photographs, and we worked very hard at this, that are shown in the document are of Lake Worth examples. So, we spent a lot of time, um, I was halfway expecting to have the police call on me on a couple of occasions, you know, driving back and forth on, well, by the way, the one-way street makes it a little bit trickier, but, um...
That was you.
That was me, yes. Yes. Radio blaring, doors open, photographing everything in sight, but, but we wanted to sh, to give you a sampling of, you know, local examples. Windows, what are the windows that are typical for a bungalow-style house? What are the doors that are typical for a bungalow-style house? What are the materials that are most appropriate and what are found mostly on bungalow-style homes? Wood siding, rough stucco, not smooth stucco typically, but rough stucco, um, you know, what are the, even shakes and, and wood shingles? So, that's, that's a sample of one of the style sections that's in the book. Now, the book is like two hundred and thirty pages, so obviously, I wasn't gonna go through every single one of those, but I wanted to give you, you know, an example of that. Now, you may have heard, the Secretary of Interior Standards provides guidelines for rehabilitation. Those are the federal standards that must be followed, um, when you or I come in to do an addition to or modify our historic home or building. Um, we tried to simplify that, there's a lot of words in this chapter, but we really tried to provide graphics and, and, and make it contextual. For instance, rather than just saying, these are the Secretary of Interior Standards, or what is it that I can actually do? What are you gonna let me do? Um, what is appropriate and what is not appropriate? I remember Commissioner Maxwell and we met, um, you know, that was an important thing. We need to know what the options are, you know? Again, historic homeowners, when they come through this process, they're different than builders, for the most part, you know, who, who do this for a living. They're people that wanna improve their home and don't have a lot of experience in this. So, giving them a head start, we thought, um, and clarifying what the expectations are is very important. So, through this chapter, what we did is we went through and we identified, I'm sorry, this is kind of hard to read, but for instance, exterior finishes. If your original finish was wood siding, a successful replacement would be a, a different type of wood siding, or even a synthetic siding. But you'll notice the red line here. The red line is where you reach a point where replacing your wood siding with vinyl siding is not gonna be considered successful. And then you're on your own. Um, as an applicant, I can ask pretty much for whatever I want. I mean, I can come in and say that I wanna take my Mission-style house and turn it into an igloo, but that doesn't mean that I'm gonna have staff support. Um, it means that I'm probably gonna have some tough sledding. So, for instance, if your, um, original, uh, exterior surface or finish was rough stucco, see on the bottom there, over on the left, really, to change that to smooth stucco, um, isn't really, uh, isn't really supported.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
And just, how do you know I have an historic home? So, how do you know when what you have, when you're purchasing a home, is the original? Sorry. Is the original, or if it's been done over? 'Cause there's so many different stucco patterns.
Sure.
And, you know, and I'm, I'm the third owner of my house, built in nineteen twenty-four.
Right.
So, how many repairs, re-stuccos, re-whatever? Uh, 'cause there are several textures, and you don't know which one is the original.
If I, if I can jump in on that.
Sure.
What I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation is going back to the historical property record files that we have, and if your house is one of those that has some of the original property cards, we can tell you with fair good certainty what was originally put into your home. Um, but there are times where you really don't know, and you, then you have to look at, you know, what was the timeframe it was built at, what style was it built in? And that's why these design guidelines become so helpful to us, is that we can then say, okay, you're built in this timeframe, your house is of this style, or looks like it was originally constructed in this style, we can get pretty close to where we think your siding, your windows, your roof, et cetera, were.
And also, I mean, you have knowledgeable staff. That's why you, that's why you hire, you know, um, staff who are professionals in this field. They know that you're not always gonna be able to restore. When I bought, uh, my bungalow, it was built in twenty-four, and it was filled with awning windows and jalicy windows and god knows whatever else. And I knew none of those were original, but I wanted to bring it back to original, uh, as much as I could. So, that's why working with staff, in, in particular in historic districts, is so important, because they can help guide you. Um, so, that's the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Windows are really tricky, um, because we're, we are all bombarded with the window commercials that are on TV these days. I'm gonna protect my family, I'm never gonna have to board my house, or put up shutters, or any of that. Um, you know, that's, uh, there's some mythology to that, um, but getting the style of window right, the type, is very, very important. So, for instance, if you have on the left, upper-left, a double-hung window was the original, or is an appropriate window, a successful replacement might be a single-hung window, which is the next one over to the right. Another successful replacement, although not as great, might be a single-leaf casement window which opens out, it still replicates it from the street. However, an unsuccessful replacement would be a sliding window, because it's just not even in the same character. However, a sliding window might be appropriate for Art Deco, or for Streamline Modern. So, we're trying to, and again, none of these are absolute, you know? Each case is gonna have to be looked at on its own, with its own merits. But this, um, and in talking to Jordan, you know, they've been using, if I may say, I mean, Jordan told me that they've been using this document already when some applicants come in, and it does help clarify, you know, sort, what the expectations are. Jalicy windows, um, well, you know, nobody wants jalicy windows anymore for a variety of reasons, but, um, jalicy windows, if they were original, they were part of a particular architectural style. You would've never found jalicy windows as an original window on a bungalow, but you might've found them on a mid-century modern house. So, that means that you don't wanna replace the jalices with a bungalow-type window, you wanna do something that's more modern. So, you see, for instance, the slider window might be appropriate. This may seem overwhelming, but, um, it really, we spent a lot of time on this section, um, because we knew that we had to provide steps for helping, uh, your applicants, yes.
The first item that you say jalicy window, what is the covering that you see? I see it mainly on Mission-style homes and Spanish homes, but it looks like a hurricane protection, but it looks just like that, that's permanently in the place of the window.
Those are, they have, they have shutters or those, like those clamshells that come down.
No, no, I'm talking, it looks like the very first...
The shutters? Sure.
It's, it's a little, uh, magical, see? Some of them are wood, and they're in the windows from...
Those are the shutters.
Yeah.
Those are louvered shutters, sure.
They're shutters, but they're built into the windows themselves.
Um, same thing with roofs. Uh, we talked about, um, you know, the barrel tile roof before. Uh, Mayor, you having a Mediterranean Revival home, um, probably has barrel tile roof. Uh, you can imagine... You can imagine replacing the barrel tile with a 5V crimp metal roof would not be appropriate.
It has masonry.
Yeah. And it would... But there are variations of different barrel tiles that might be appropriate. So, again, trying to provide this matrix of opportunities. In this section, we also talk about what are some appropriate landscape and site features like driveways that are less intrusive. You know, this isn't a code. You know, you have your land development regulations, but, you know, to nudge people in the right direction so they're not paving their front yards is important.
Commissioner Robinson?
Go back to the roof slide and...
Oh, just sorry.
The change from the flat concrete tile to the asphalt shingle. I just want you to point out the difference. And architect, not just looking at the roof, but the entire building is affected by the change in the architecture of the roof. And I want you to tell the public that that's really frowned upon when changing...
Well, sir, what's the question? Sorry.
The...
What's the difference between which time and which time?
There's a tremendous... Architecturally, not just in the roof, but in the building, the architecture of the building with a concrete tile roof versus... And if we go... If we are allowing asphalt shingles in place of concrete tile. And it's... I know there's an economic situation and all that, but depending on the architecture is usually ruined by going to asphalt from concrete tile.
Homes that have concrete tile roofs, that is one of the key character-defining elements of those styles. It could be masonry vernacular. It could be the minimal traditional masonry. It could be ranch.
But he's talking about architecturally, what does it do when you remove a concrete tile from...
It turns it into something that it's not.
Creates... It pokes a beehive, is what it does.
Does it structurally challenge this, you know, does it...
No. I mean, concrete tile roof, to take a roof that originally had, you know, asphalt shingles or some sort of shingle and try to put concrete tile on, because it's so much heavier...
It's a weight reduction.
That would cause potentially some structural issues, but you're going in the other direction. The issue is that you're just forever altering the style of that structure when you're taking a concrete tile roof and replacing it with something else. And it's a challenge, because, you know, there are all sorts of questions about, you know, how much more expensive it is, what more percentage it is in terms of its cost. There are some maintenance concerns sometimes in terms of keeping it white, you know, because you have...
It affects the color.
Yeah. But from an architectural and historic preservation perspective, it's... Your staff will do... Again, you can come in and ask for it, and it doesn't mean that the board won't grant it. I mean, I served on the board in West Palm Beach, and I've seen cases where applicants who wanted to change concrete tiles were denied. In some cases where the circumstances were different, they permitted it, because the house had been altered in so many other ways that it really didn't resemble what it started out as. But that's why I say on a case-by-case basis. But this is to let your applicants know, I come in and I want to take my concrete tile roof off and put on asphalt shingles, I'm on the other side of the red line. So, I'm going to have to make this case. I'm going to have to make a compelling case to your board without your staff support. And that's kind of what this means. Did I answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Moving on, you know, the siding of buildings is important, that you want to follow sort of the... If you're building, if you're doing new construction in a historic district, like Kathleen showed a lot of examples of this, it's not just the style, but it's the massing. It's also the positioning of the buildings. That's important. So, oftentimes, you want to make sure that you've got sort of a street elevation as part of the application, that you can understand the context that a new building's going in. Hurricane protection is huge. I mean, hurricane protection is one of the roots of the, if not the root, of the window conversation. I want to get, you know, windstorm windows, you know? But I'll tell you, we're going through this in our office up in Stewart right now, which was built in the 20s. And when it was rebuilt, all-new, you know, hurricane windows were put in. And they're leaking like a sieve. And one of the things that we talk about in here is that these impact windows, while they won't blow in perhaps like other windows, older windows might, they do break and they do need to be replaced. So, the best thing you can do is actually cover them. If it's appropriate to your style, actually have permanent, you know, operable shutters or have some other system. So, we showed some examples of different systems. But there's kind of a myth out there that, you know, impact windows don't break, and that's not true. So, finally, and I'll wrap it up, we've got lots of additional information, links to resources, similar to what Kathleen was talking about before. You can imagine, we've got an exhaustive glossary to sort of try to explain some of these elements that are in here, like what is a scupper? And a bibliography, because we didn't make all of this up. And it's well-sourced and... No, I mean it sincerely. I mean, going after, you know, getting the best information that we could that's out there and bringing it to your town was our distinct pleasure, so... Oh, and this just in, although Mark stole our thunder. I was hoping to break the news to you that you've received another Historic Preservation Grant, but then he broke out the list of all seven of them.
I got excited, sorry.
But as Kathleen mentioned, you know, it's an honor to be able to be a recipient, you know? I mean, you know what it's like with grants. I mean, they don't feel comfortable granting the same city over and over again. But that alone should give you comfort in the strength of your historic fabric and also the strength of your program, so...
Commissioner Robinson, do you have a question?
I had a question about... You've mentioned fences and materials, and fences are sometimes a part of the controversy in historic preservation. Materials, let's see, plastic versus what kind of plastic? Do you want to tell us what we can and can't do?
Well, I don't know your code well enough to...
Yeah, I don't think he has to tell us what we can and can't do.
We regulate fences in a different section, and with the LDR memo we just brought forward to you, if you remember, we did say that we expanded the materials that are allowed in fences now so that vinyl fencing could be allowed in other areas. Chailing fencing is still only allowed in the side or rear yards. So, we regulate all that in the LDRs under this fencing section.
And one other thing, when you get the economic study that is, that's going to show the economic impact, will you share that with us?
Of course.
And then it will be fact.
Of course.
And I just put this sketch up here. These are some notes from a mad person about what we think we're going to be doing in the second phase. Honestly, we're going to be doing a few things. We're going to be adding some pieces to the design guidelines that don't yet exist. We heard some good comments from your Historic Preservation Board about climatic response, sustainability. We may go deeper into some of the storm protection issues. May provide additional drawings for new construction and additions, just to help people visualize the massing issues. We also want to create a little how-to brief. What is this thing for? So that when I come to the city of Lake Worth and I meet with Jordan, he can say, well, you know, this is a big book, but here, this is a primer. This is a 101 on what this is all about. And, you know, that'll help you visualize, I think, where we're going. And then finally, you guys have this great assembly of what they call rack cards, which are the bi-fold, trifolds. So, we want to do one of those for each of the historic districts, so that, you know, you can hand those out as well, the history, the map, and some of their key elements.
Vice Mayor Burton?
Thank you. I apologize for being late. But I've seen this presentation before. Has this presentation really changed in the last two or three months since we...
In the last two or three months?
Yeah.
Significantly?
Oh, it has, okay.
Yeah. It's reflective of the document that's before you.
Okay. The other question I have is obviously, all of the design guidelines are not necessarily included in our handout here this evening. So, there's going to be a huge, massive...
I'm sorry?
All the proposed design guidelines, those are not necessarily all-inclusive in this document. They're going to be in a much larger...
The spiral bound, sorry, the spiral bound copy you should have in front of you is the full draft of the design guidelines. We gave you all a paper copy of it.
So, if adopted, this is what we're going to use as the bible, so to speak?
That will be the book, yes, absolutely.
So, whatever's contained in this document is what you're going to be using in real time when somebody comes with a project.
The final version of that document is what we'll be using, absolutely, yes.
Okay. And I think I also heard the word or the term financial impact study. Actually, we're doing it, you're going to be able to tell us how property values have risen and quantify that based on our historic districts and the timeline. They've been in existence the last 15 years or so?
We'd love to work with you on a market analysis of that, but that's not part of the scope.
Oh, I misunderstood.
No, what Kathleen was mentioning earlier is that in Dade County... Is it Sidney, Miami or Dade County? Dade County has actually commissioned a large study to... And we talked about this in our interview. You know, there's a 40-some-odd, you know, financial studies about historic districts around the country, and you had said, boy, we'd love to have one for Lake Worth. And I couldn't disagree.
And I'll say it again, you know, it's nice to say that historic districts add value. It's another thing to quantify it by, you know, having actually done the study. And that's really something I'm looking forward to, because, you know, there's going to come a point where... Never mind.
We would fully support that and would love to participate in it.
Sure you would.
There are hundreds of them throughout the country and across the globe, too.
It has to be specific to Lake Worth. What is the impact, the economic impact been in this city as a result of designating historic districts? You know, and I think we need to get beyond the rhetoric of saying that it brings, it adds value to the property, particularly when you think that our property or when you know that our properties are located on the waterfront. So, I just want, once again, throw that out to the board here, you know, as we move forward, talking about historic preservation.
Vice Mayor?
I think...
Mr. Harari?
Yeah, I'll just say that a year ago, I was certainly in a different place when it comes to historic preservation. I didn't really like it at all. I felt it was an unfair sort of impingement on the rights of property owners to do what it is that they want to do. I felt it kept us from making our own history in this moment. And thanks to some people who took the time to refer me to some resources, Frederica Mittenner, who's a resident here and a historic preservationist, helped me understand why it's important. And I guess today, I'd say that it's probably the only thing that stands between us and design oblivion. So, I think it's really important. It just has to work for the people who live here. And we have to have tools for them to understand what's appropriate and what's not. And these tools have to walk them through the rationale and help them understand what's in it for them. And I think when it comes to that, you did exactly that. I think this document is fantastic. You know, what I've read, the idea that it can get better blows my mind. So, I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for the timeframe in which you've done it. I think you know that Lake Worth residents have been very impatient for a document such as this for a very long time, and it appears that you delivered. So, I can't wait to see it be put into use. This is very exciting. This is very exciting. It's also very good reading, and I think, you know, this should probably be up there with, at least portions of it, up there with the cottage book. Because it, you know, if you're not familiar with Lake Worth and you want to know why it's authentic, here's a book for you that'll go into detail on it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I read it cover to cover. I very much enjoyed it, and I could see pieces from it. It was funny, I provided you with the old College Park historic neighborhood. When I was, when we were sold our house, when we bought our house, I was given this proudly by an owner of the house to say, "This is going to be College Park in the future, included paved streets and, you know, cobblestone pavers and historic signs and lighting and all of these things that it had." And I thought, wow, that's going to be the neighborhood soon. And in fact, my house is this one on the Mediterranean Revival. This is before we bought it, but on the first page, I forgot what page it is, that's actually my house.
I'll confess, that picture was provided by staff, but I don't recall if I knew that that was your house, so...
No, it actually is. Well, it was funny, it was before we bought it. It was the old colors and everything like that from the previous owner and whatnot. But it was on the cover of that document. So, I think whoever the newspaper was had taken it from there. But what's interesting is that, number one, I read it through. The hardest part for us here in this community is we are finally seeing investment in this community. And our owners who have been here a long time have been maintaining and working hard to do those things. And as new people purchase these properties that were mainly, many of which were in disrepair and really causing issues in all of the neighborhoods throughout the entire city. So, when people came in to invest in them, anything, maybe they weren't, you know, the Lotto winners or the Mega Millions winners that were coming in to do that, just wanted a good, solid home, has good bones, want to do something, and they fell into the situation of where we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do this. And it's difficult for us on this side of the table to say, gosh, we just want it to look good again. We want someone to love it again and to be a good neighbor again and not be empty and board it up. And so, you know, it's a fine line, because our city was so far behind for so long. Now that we're seeing investment in the community and that... But we still, again, the people that purchase in all of our neighborhoods, the costs of those homes are so varied, from millions to, you know, to $50,000. So, you know, you're looking at different people coming to invest. Not investors, we're talking about people, families, couples, singles, you know, that want to do something or they want to have pride in it, but they may not necessarily have the budget to do the... We also have an educational process that we really need to make sure that people know that they're purchasing an historic home when they do, some of which, many of which, say that they don't. Sometimes it's listed on the MLS listing, sometimes it's not. And I check that myself to make sure. And we shouldn't be encouraging Realtors to hand something to say, hey, if you do this, this is what historic means, and these are the guidelines. But I honestly, from the changes that we've made with roofs, doors, fences and those things, garage doors, and then now these set of guidelines, I think we're putting people on a much more comfortable path.
Absolutely.
Me, and the only reason I mention my house is because when I first came to the city, there were two processes. You had to go to Historic Resources Preservation and Planning and Zoning. And then you went before the City Commission, if there was a variance of any kind that you needed on anything. So, we went three times, 13 projects, literally simultaneously. And not one person ever mentioned to us back in 2002 that there was money or tax incentives available to anyone who invested in this store. 13 projects.
Wow.
That sure would be nice now. But you know what I'm saying? So, you're... There's got the communication and the dialogue. This gives us an ability to work now from a level playing field, to say, hey, this is what we suggest. This is what would look good. And we can now show them, we have qualified staff now that can show them, hey, you can do this affordably. And here's how, you know what I mean? And this is how this looks. Like, I know myself, I learned about, you know, my windows. Well, they had jealousy windows in part of the house, and I have arched windows in the front, right? If you look, I wish I could find my stupid house in there.
It's '91.
'91?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on '91, you see those arched windows? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay? So, you've got these with the columns, original, still intact on there, and the ledges here and these beautiful arched windows that they... On the inside of the house, you know what they are? Square.
Right.
They're not an arched window. It was stuccoed on the outside to appear like an arched window, but the actual interiors are rectangular boxes. So, any person who comes in to look at a replacement, I don't know how to replace that without tearing the whole stucco off the front of the house and taking it off the... And it was like... And then the previous owner, they cut the weights off of them. So, they jiggled, and then I found an old-timer who put, oh, what did they call them? Jamliners, metal jamliners into the sides that actually hold the windows from shaking every time the windows... So, there's a lot of... I've been through it all.
Yeah.
From paint swatches and things to things and everything in between.
And exorcism.
And yeah, and every time I open a wall, I call a plumber and electrician and an exorcist to come in to figure out what's going on in the house. But the interesting thing is that I've been through that and knew when I was purchasing it. I purchased it because it was historic, but a lot of other people... Especially when you come to the more modern centuries, when you talked about that ranch, it was like, my house is historic? What? And then you have the argument that my city manager's house is built the same year as mine, and it's not historic in mine. So, I had to bring that up.
You did, yes.
Just one more time.
But I'm not in a historic district.
But he's not in a historic district.
Not yet.
He's in College Park.
I'm in a hysteric district.
That's true.
If I may say, though, you know, and Kathleen could attest to this for days, every historic preserv... I would go on a limb and say, every historic preservation program within our region, if not the state or even the country, goes through these battles. region, if not the state or even the country, goes through these battles. You know, these are tough, you know, they're economic decisions, they're stylistic decisions, but the key thing is that those that just stick with it and get through the battles and make things happen and tweak and adjust, they see the benefit in the long run. You know, I'm, I'm from Miami, and we used to go to the beach in nineteen eighty-three on South Beach, and it was just blown out. And it took the Miami Design Preservation League to create the Art Deco District, which is now world famous and hideously expensive. You could buy a building on the beach back in the eighties for a hundred thousand dollars, you know? I mean, so, but because they said, no, we're not going to allow this piece of our history to go away, one of the greatest Art Deco districts in the world, if you look what's happened to the south and around it, it's, it's been forever altered and not recognizable. So just, we hope that this will help you just keep marching and toe the line with your program. You're going to have these battles, you're going to have to tweak and adjust, but it's worth it in the long run.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I too want to thank you for a great document. I too have mixed thoughts, and we will carry on with that. But I, I like the idea that, you know, you took some of our suggestions. One was from me, actually looking at the different designs for doors, different designs for windows, and I'd like to take that, because originally, I, I love the idea that it's in this big document, but I still would like them to walk away with something, more of an educational piece, so when they come in, you know, you can say, I know that by law we can't recommend where you can get the product from, but if we can figure out how to do something along that line, because again, they're going to walk away and go to Home Depot, and not be able to find it, and get frustrated, and come back to you, and, and, you know, so if, if we can take it one step further with, like, the last piece, something that you could walk away with for doors, something you can walk away with windows, and, you know, maybe suggestions on where you can find something based on a nineteen fifty house, you know, just to make it simple and easier. And then the education process, you know, we need to get to our realtors, we need to get to our developers that are working with these homes. We have, we have a plethora of same developers that, you know, like to work with the city, and those are the ones that they're going to go to, so we need to make sure that they have this information to know exactly. Does this document out-trump any of the changes that we've made?
No, it actually, it's to work with them, this is a complimentary piece to go with it, so.
So everything that we, we've discussed before for windows, doors, roofing, this complements.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then historic tax credits, talk a little bit more about that, because, you know, we are.
Oh, now you talk.
Well, we, we are a budget town anyway, and I, I know that there's a couple people that have taken, especially in my district, taken advantage of the taxes or credit. Does it take everything off? I mean, I'm hearing mixed reviews that, you know, oh, he did this work, but now he pays no taxes, you know?
It's not a no tax, I'll let Kathleen explain it more, but it, it's, it gives you a tax break on the increase in value for ten years.
I give entire workshops on this topic.
It seemed to me that it was a long period of time.
It's a period of ten years, but what, it's, the town still collects the same amount of taxes you collected before the improvement. So it's meant to give people who pour money into a historic property a little bit of a tax break by not immediately slapping them with the higher tax bill because their property value has gone up.
So they're still paying taxes on the original amount, it's just the improvement.
Yes, correct. It is.
To feel a little bit more comfortable about it.
Yes, yes, so you're still collecting the same amount of taxes.
It's like the CRA.
And then, at the, at the, at the end of the ten years, it drops off, and then you collect on the full value of the property. But the exemption is base, is just on the value of the improvement.
Well, it's funny, I look at, I go on, I love historic properties all over, so I look at, there's a website for it all over the country, historicproperties.com, and I'll always look in there on the weekends, and I'm going through, and almost every single one of them says, tax credits available by the someone, so I was like, why don't they say that on our properties?
And, and the tax credit stays with the house, so if you sell, if you're selling a property, you can say, hey.
Wait a second, are they retroactive?
You're getting.
Only back to two thousand and three. Just kidding.
You're getting a property that has a tax credit on it.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yeah, I'd like, you talked about people walking away with something for ten bucks, I'd like them to be able to walk away with this document. Is that possible to put a price on this?
It's twelve fifty.
And make it available to the public? If, you know, if people were investing in thousands of dollars, I think at ten dollar or whatever.
I will leave my copy in the office, and anyone that wants to copy the section that pertains to their house can make copies of mine.
Well, I'll have to make it available, but I'll be honest, one of the things that we're excited about, and this is part of the next phase, and part of the talent that this city has been able to bring in, and that is to get this document onto the website, and we're going to make it interactive. If you haven't done it yet, go to the zoning map on the website, and if you pull up a parcel, you can see a whole lot of information already. You can tell if it's within a CRA district or outside, you can tell if it's within a historic district, if it's a contributing structure in this historic district, you know your zoning district, you know your future land use classification, just by clicking on there. And we're going to add another link, it'll say additional information, and from there we're going to drill down even deeper and find more information about the property. We've been able to scrape data off the Papa website, and we're going to let you know the year your house was built and provide even more information.
Let the realtors have access to that.
They, they do now, get them to use it. Another realtor's workshop is needed to get them, is educational. But a big part of the next phase is really all the educational pieces that go along with this. And so getting this document, we'll have it available in hard copy, but we're also going to have it available online, and we're working with Joey in our G S department, and with Jordan, and with Andrew, the new planner we just brought in, to make it interactive so that when you say, I have a Mission Revival House, you'll be able to click on that, and it will take you to that section of this code, and you'll be able to look up information about it, and it will step you through. Because I think we're getting farther and farther away from the days where everyone wants this big, albeit expensive to print, hardbound copy, when they, when they can quickly go on the internet, get to the sections they need, and find the information they can quickly. So we'll have both available, yes, you'll be able to buy a copy, a paper copy, if you're old fashioned like us. And to make you guys feel good, if you haven't seen recently, the Brady Bunch House just went up for sale again, and it is, and it's historic structure now. So that, that helps us feel great, historic now. The house I grew up in, probably just crossed over, was built in nineteen sixty-four, I'm like, you've got to be kidding me, that's historic? But to take this and get out to the neighborhoods and get out to the people and say, this is what you can do with your house, because we've learned that with this more, with education and sitting down, and the people who come in and can sit down with Jordan, and sit down with Abraham, and go through it, and learn through, and look through their property records, and see what they can do, so many of them walk away realizing, oh my gosh, now I'm excited about fixing up my house, and I really want to, to do a better job. So the more we can train and work and teach, and it doesn't have to be in a historic district, city manager, you don't have to have your house, city manager, within a historic district, or even have it as a city manager has designated his house as a historic house. I'm just saying, if that was an option.
Yeah.
You could do that, even if you're outside, I don't know if you do that, manager, I don't know if you, anyway, all right, I like my job, I'll stop there. But we want to make sure this document is, is an educational piece for anybody in the city.
My price just went up fifty thousand.
If I could just mention something that I didn't mention before, and you're talking about it being an educational piece, you want everybody in your city to feel comfortable looking through this document and reading this document. So we tried very, very, very hard, planners and architects and preservationists, we have our own languages, engineers too, they have their own language.
Oh, yes, we know.
And some of this, some of it can be very technical, and some of the design guidelines we were looking at as possible, you know, do we want to design it like this one or that one, or, very technical. And the average homeowner is not going to know what you're talking about. So we tried really, really hard through the narrative, through the different histories of the town and the different districts, to really have it read as something more interesting than just wrote, like, this is an architectural document. So we want it to be something that, that everybody in Lake Worth can, can understand and use, because that's, that's the goal.
Commissioner Harney?
I, well, I wasn't finished, but, you know, I just said a few things, and then it spurred other conversation, which isn't a bad thing. Exciting time.
I get how I feel.
Exciting time to be in Lake Worth, because staff is promoting historic preservation. And, and I, I only said that once tonight, so that's good. But it is an exciting time, because you guys have created the, the grants that got you to come and further historic preservation. So it, it really is an exciting time to be in Lake Worth. It is a guideline, though, and I just want the public to know that historic preservation is always a case by case.
Absolutely.
You know, so it, it isn't something to be feared. The other thing is that I'm not interested in a, you know, I know you would have liked to study Lake Worth and tell us the economic impact of historic preservation, but I'm willing to go on the judgment of the studies of the other cities that have, have said that it's, it's a fact that it is an economic impact. So unless we're that different from every, any other city that's doing historic preservation, when you tell us that that study is done and, and what it says, I'm good with that. I, I'm not interested.
Make sure you all get copies.
Good. And that's going to be based on other cities' impact, so I don't think we need to prove to ourselves that, I, I think we should trust the other cities' studies.
Commissioner Harney?
I, I don't disagree, I don't think we're the only place to have historic districts near the water. But that said, first of all, I'm going to steal your DNA metaphor. I think it's a very, very good metaphor, I meant to say that earlier, I, I didn't say it, but yeah, like, it, it is exactly what makes us unique. But then the last thing, Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Mayor Amoruso said something which is important, it, it would be really nice for folks to have a kind of a, a place where they can go and see where they can get these things, and if by law we can't do that, then maybe that's a job for one of our local nonprofits, either the Cottages Group or the Historical Society of Lake Worth. And if one of those groups were to maybe approach the city, would the city be, be willing to work with them, and they can kind of catalog all the different places where you can get this stuff?
You can't, it's just like.
You can't refer to them either.
You can't refer them either.
We, we can't. So what, we have. We can't say, hey, this local nonprofit has, has done all this work.
We can say that.
Figuring out where to get these things, and if you were to go to this local nonprofit's website, they have a whole catalog of where you can get each one of these things for your home. We, we can absolutely say that, and I can tell you. But if, if the nonprofit group were to do the legwork and come to the city and say, is, is this window, this, is this, then that, okay. Absolutely, yeah, and, and we've been working with the city attorney's office to try to find a way to provide more information within the boundaries of what we're legally allowed to do. And as we keep working forward, we want to do that, because I think that, and it, it doesn't have to be in, in a historic district, just providing good resources to our citizens, I think, is the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here, and if we can do that across the board, then we'll try to do that.
Bless you.
Bless you. All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate it, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for rearranging the schedule, because Kathleen now has the privilege of driving all the way back to Miami.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Safe drive, travels, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's good to meet you, too.
Look forward to getting that information.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, I need to take a quick break, but you can continue on if you'd like, and I'll be right back.
Thanks for having me.
We'll move on.
Okay.
Same staff presenting.
Yes.
Take it away.
Okay, William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. As a point of reference, all of you are not on the commission, but when we adopted the new LDRs in Land Development Regulations in August of two thousand and thirteen, it was a Herculean change in what, in how we regulate zoning and planning within the city. You may not be aware that we already have a major thoroughfare design guideline booklet that was adopted by ordinance that included both historic preservation components, as well as how architecture and building would take place on the major thoroughfares.
When was that adopted?
I think two thousand and one or two, and it was quickly outdated. But, so by consequence, not only did we need historic preservation guidelines, but we needed a really fresh look and update for the major thoroughfare guidelines, and for the public's edifications, the major thoroughfares in the city are Lake and Le Sern Avenues, Tenth Avenue North, Sixth Avenue South, Lake Worth Road, Dixie Highway, and a vast majority of federal highway up until it becomes part of College Park. So we were able to collaborate with the Community Development Agency last year, and contributions from the Public Services Department, Electrical Utility Department, Water Sewer Department, as well as Building and our department, were able to put together enough money to hire an outside consultant, Keith and Schnars, to update and review, review and update our major thoroughfare guidelines for the major thoroughfares, and then the historic preservation staff was able to update, and what you just saw, the historic preservation guidelines. So the document is finally at a point where it has been presented to the CRA Board. It will be presented in the next month or so to both the Planning and Zoning Board and the Historic Resource Preservation Board, but we felt it was a good time at this workshop to let you have an overview of what that document contains, how anticipated to be worked, and we'll be moving forward with it in a very similar adoption process, as Mark explained, with the historic preservation guidelines. They are adopted by ordinance and by reference work hand in hand with Land Development Regulation Code. So I'm going to give credit to Keith and Schnars who put together our PowerPoint presentation. Unfortunately, they were not able to be here this evening, but we've been working closely together, so I feel fairly comfortable, I can generally go over most of it, and if you've got questions I can't answer, I'll get back to Heidi Siegel, who is a project manager from Keith and Schnars, and get back to you with an answer. The purpose of the document was to look at the design parameters for development, new development along the major thoroughfares. One of the critical aspects of the document, it does take into context the different characteristics of those major thoroughfare, thoroughfares, depending on where they're located in the city. It acknowledges the other plans the city has on Land Development Code, our comprehensive plan, the redevelopment plans from the CRA, and as you all heard at a previous workshop, the cultural master plan for downtown. The guidelines are, they're illustrative, and to help someone understand how our Land Development Code works. And more importantly, based on my time here, the city's very proud of its unique character, its density, its intensity, its walkability and cultural diversity, which this document embraces and encourages to continue. This is the cover as it's anticipated, there was a site inventory and analyses made of the various sub areas, looking at what kind of architecture we have, our, the major thoroughfare conditions, the infrastructure that is there, which includes streets gaping, curbs, sidewalks, landscaping, and how the buildings front the streets, and what aspects we like, what aspects we may not like, and with a emphasis on trying to keep the city walkable, attainable, pedestrian friendly, and maintain the unique character that's here in Lake Worth, but bring it up to modern day and make it fresh. As I mentioned before, there are generally six major thoroughfares. We have excluded out of this document what's in the document in reference to H, J, L, and M streets, because most of those are actually in the historic district, and the information here does not quite relate to a major thoroughfare, but those streets were included in the original designation of the major thoroughfares under the zoning code that we had. So here are some of the visions that were put forward for the major thoroughfares, again, an emphasis on pedestrian friendly, a density that would support the types of activities we like to have in Lake Worth, appreciating and embracing a new scale where it's appropriate, looking at the vision for new development, being forward thinking, showcasing the individuality of Lake Worth, and also making it a very important aspect to be environmentally sustainable So we set out to do some key principles in the document, and they're listed here, I won't go through all of them, but the major thoroughfares emphasis in the LDR changes that we made was to try to make the public realm, which is the experience of the public along the streets, as positive as possible, looking at human scale, trying to embrace a rhythm and pattern, looking at fenestration, which is the windows and doors, having this document be a companion to the historic districts, because they do overlap in some places, creating a safe community, and trying a safe community, and trying to complement the existing plans and vision for the thoroughfares. There were four areas that were studied, or five, in the document. One was Lake Worth Road between Beltwell Road and Lake Osborne Drive and Interstate 95. Another key emphasis area was Lake and Lucerne Avenues between A and F. Another one was the West side of Dixie Highway between 13th Avenue North and Wellesley Drive, Federal Highway corridor, except the downtown. Federal Highway is a little bit unique in the sense that it has a component that is zoned downtown, some of it is zoned mixed-use east, and some of it's zoned federal highway mixed-use. And then the northern end is actually single-family residential when it hits College Park. And then also looking at an area in the southern part of the city, South Dixie Highway near 6th Avenue South.
William, when you said it doesn't go all the way up through College Park, why is that? What's going on?
Well, the context of the major thoroughfare guidelines are looking at larger-scale development versus, and what portion of the federal highway that is governed is in a historic district governed by the document that Mark, Dana, and Kathleen...
So when you get up to the historic area, it cuts it off there?
The zoning changes. And so this is really emphasis on mixed-use, commercial, retail, higher-density development. So SubArea 1 is essentially a study area of the tri-rail station, looking at what our code would allow. We did not ask the consultant to embrace any particular architectural style, but look at the form, mass, setbacks, and modeling, figure grounds standpoint of what could happen in the context that's there. And we will be presenting to you later another study that was done at the same site. You may recall our study portfolio that was done back in 2014 for our forums had this same site reviewed. We've had that updated as well as two other sites, and they will be coming forward to you in the presentation at a later date.
Where is this in our book?
This...
Page 23.
23?
22, 23.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, page 23. And again, the book is a guideline to give some inspiration to people who may want to invest in the city and give them a better understanding of what the LDRs can embrace, both from a graphic standpoint and pictorially, as well as simple bullets that explain what the LDRs contain. SubArea 2 is an area downtown. This is in West Village, general vicinity of Lake and Lucerne, showing a mixed-use project that's mostly housing. Don't be frightened by the colors. It's sort of encourage excitement. And again, this is a draft document. We're working with the consultant to tone some things down. SubArea 3 is an area on Dixie Highway that is now a sort of underutilized site, and this shows what the development potential could be if it were maxed out. It doesn't necessarily say this will be what would happen, but it gives an overview and understanding of what all could happen there, again, from the LDR and comp plan standpoint. SubArea 4 is a location along Federal Highway that shows a higher-density, multifamily project and the aspects of it. SubArea 5 is a southern area of Dixie Highway on the east side. Keep in mind that our LDRs reflect that the east side of Dixie Highway is fundamentally different than the west side. The east side is generally only one lot deep, and it backs up to single-family residential that's usually one or two stories. On the west side, we have areas that are two blocks deep that go up to the railroad tracks. So we do embrace contextually the difference in intensity, height and density between the east side of Dixie Highway and the west side.
And remind us, how high can we go on that side?
On the SubArea 5 on the east side, right now, the zoning allows you to go to three stories and 35 feet. If you do an urban plan development, you can actually add potentially an additional floor and get the height up to, I believe, 42 feet.
Thank you. Herman?
Could you put up a slide on South Federal Highway, the possibilities there?
I don't have one of those right now.
Why not?
We did one for the, well, the difference between the north federal highway and south federal highway is basically negligible, so we can go back to what was done for federal highway, which could be plopped anywhere along that street.
So page 29?
I got it. I wanted to say South Federal Highway, too. Is that possible?
Yes, it's possible. We can mention that it could be federal highway anywhere, if you'd like.
I would like.
Sure.
So it's that simple?
Well, most of the blocks and lots in Lake Worth are the same size. And so the development that's shown there on Federal Highway in SubArea 3, I'm sorry, SubArea 4 is an entire block big. It wouldn't, you could only do half of it because we only have half a block on the south side if you chose the west side of Federal Highway. If you stayed on the west side of Federal Highway, something very similar to this could be done. The east side is different.
For the record, I believe Commissioner Robinson was trying to focus on, you know, the south side is his district, and the south side, there still is a lot of development potential. So if we're marketing, we should be marketing the south side, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because the possibilities on South Federal Highway with the empty lots are three times what you're talking about on North Federal. So I don't understand why you're focusing on North Federal and ignoring the empty lots on South Federal. I just don't understand that, but it's okay.
I will, I will ask...
I'm trying to understand it.
I will ask the consultant why they chose this particular area versus, again, it is still a draft, and also this project is a collaborative effort among the CRA, the city, and the consultant itself.
And the department.
And the departments. So I will find out why that area was chosen, but it seemed to me that they were trying to demonstrate how a development can contextually in that area work within the context of being either adjacent to or very near a historic district.
I guess my point is, is that we've got other issues on South Federal Highway, and one of the hopes is that we can build our way out of those problems. And if we're not encouraging, if we're not even looking at it, it disturbs me.
Okay, there's other, there are other studies being done, other things we've looked at.
Yeah, we do a lot of studies.
No, well, there's some other development schemes. We couldn't include all of them in the guideline book, and I'll get to where else you're going to attach the back of this as well when we get through it, but, and...
I'm sorry.
So the guidelines for site planning is the next section, and it looks at the situation of how you place the building, its scale and mass, and this will vary depending on where it gets located, in which context, in which major thoroughfare. We do encourage mixed-use development in most of these areas, talking about bringing the buildings to the street, incorporating mixed uses, being pedestrian-friendly, avoiding large parking lots in the front. Again, like what was described in the Major Historic Preservation Guideline Book, there are things that we would encourage someone to do and things that we would not encourage someone to do. Some emphasis on the right-of-way and what we would like to see in that right-of-way versus not. Emphasizing safety downtown as well on all major thoroughfares. Embracing the kind of scale and massing that would be appropriate in Lake Worth. As you know, our code does have a required setback after the second floor to try to help larger buildings be contextually compatible with the smaller buildings that are already Looking at the setbacks, and they're generally kind of the same in most thoroughfares. We do have, I think, anywhere from five feet from the property line up to 20 feet, depending on where and what district that it's in. Some site design emphasis on where to put the garbage, services, ingress, egress. And then we have some guidelines for the building design, including streetscape and landscape, how to deal with entrances. Some examples of appropriate streetscape and landscape in the city.
William, I have a question.
Sure.
So we had an issue with development and land ground cover, for lack of a better word. You were trying to change something. It got voted down. How, this picture in the far right, so how do we, are you guys looking at coming back with some suggestions? How do we take care of that if we didn't successfully change some of the things you needed at our last meeting?
Okay, these are guidelines. The other things were rules. So what we have right now, much of, and this is what's a little bit difficult, is that our code has a presumption that you're dealing with undeveloped property. And much of what we're trying to tackle is where property has been developed inappropriately or not to the standard that we would like.
Well, I see a lot of this all over the city.
Yes.
What do we need to do to fix that?
Well, there's a couple of things. One is that we have the rules in place that when new development comes in, that isn't allowed. And then there are triggers that were in the Land Development Code change that we were proposed, that when a certain amount of upgrading would happen at a site, you'd have to bring your property up to current code. Unless you're investing in your property, fixing that probably isn't going to get too much attention because we're stuck with what we have right now.
What is the alternative to that, though? The mulch all over the place, is that the one you're looking at?
It's the mulch and the dirt and the dead plants, or, you know, our ordinance kind of says, as long as you have weeds in their mode, it's okay. So you can have empty dirt, half-mulched, that looks like crap on the corner.
Point of order.
Because it falls into, it falls into the category that is allowed now.
It was allowed before. Keep in mind, we didn't change anything by not moving forward on the landscape code. What we have in place is what we have in place, and we encourage as best we can to maintain. There are some, you didn't see the whole breadth of things that are in the code. There are other parts of the code itself, the code of ordinances, that discusses blight, runoff, having stabilized soil, having ground covers. You only saw one little piece of the landscape code that we were trying to bring forward and improve to support other aspects of the code, to make it more clear and definitive and a little more easy to enforce from a co-compliance standpoint. So there, this likely would not meet co-compliance, not from a land development standpoint or from the Property Maintenance Code standpoint.
Okay, sure.
But what would you, may I just ask, just because that's something that we're going through right now, like with the, nobody being able to keep a lawn green or with, you know, all of the areas that are in the, now I'm talking about residential neighborhoods now, not whatever, the areas beyond the sidewalks. People put sod in them or whatever, and then the weather has been unbearable to keep sod alive, and then they put mulch, and then it ends up like that, and then they put rocks, and then they end up in the street, and then some people put the borders around them, and then they, then that sort of seems to be doing the trick a little bit, but I mean, what are, what are the suggestions? Because isn't that city land?
The area between the sidewalk and the curb is usually city right-of-way, but it is a responsibility of the property owner to maintain it.
So if it goes street, strip of land, sidewalk, resident?
Right.
So the piece of land between the street and the sidewalk is whose property?
In most cases, it's actually city.
Okay.
Right-of-way.
So most of that, you go through any residential neighborhood where that exists, you'll see a variety of different things, and the homeowners themselves are maintaining that property, not the city.
Right. And that's how the code was set up, that right-of-way in front of your property is your responsibility to maintain, just as it is in our code, that you maintain...
The alley.
One half of the alley behind your house, if you have one.
So what are the city's suggestions, you know, for that piece of land that everybody seems to have in front of their house that doesn't seem to want to grow anything? And then, of course, the animals will come and alleviate themselves in those areas to make it even harder to grow anything positively.
Well, there are a variety of landscape options that are water-tolerant. There are native ground covers that could be used. We were working with Dave Magru to come up with, if you had ground cover plantings or native plantings, how large would they need to be or space in order to stabilize the soil, and how much mulch would be there? There was going to be a best practices manual as a complement to the landscape code that Mark and Dave are working on. We can still encourage people to utilize that. We may, it might be difficult to require them to do certain things.
But that's in the neighborhood, right? That's not the thoroughfare plan?
No.
Sorry.
But this is a good question, and you'll find a lot of people do things in that strip that they don't pull permits for, and it's sort of there. It's there.
I just see it everywhere. We're just talking about...
And it is tough, but I can tell you, we're working hard now to try to get a list of good plants that require less water, that require less maintenance, that can grow in there, because they also benefit the city when you can put them in median strips and other public spaces, because they can cut down on the maintenance cost, and you cut down on the watering and fertilizing and everything, because we spend a lot of money to maintain plants that naturally just don't grow where we're trying to force them to grow. So there are options out there, and one of the pieces we're trying to work on, on top of everything else, is try to get some more educational pieces on how to maintain your lawn here in South Florida without spending an arm and a leg and without having to irrigate it three times a week and putting in all these chemicals and everything else like that. There are plans out there, and so we are working with a lot of landscape architects and other companies right now to try to say, hey, what will work? And so it's not on the front burner right now. It's stuff we're doing in the background. That landscape piece we brought forward was a little bit of that, but we're trying to put together this material so we can do better.
Well, just an application for the commercial structures in our thoroughfares, then, too, to say, so that they're not having to maintain all of that.
Absolutely, yeah.
They have something that looks good on a regular basis that doesn't have to be maintained.
Dune daisies everywhere. Dune daisies. And while you're on that, can we address the roundup?
You want to round up the roundup?
We want to round up the roundup, not only in residential areas, but city properties, like the golf course.
Do you know, in Iceland, a dandelion is actually grown and cultivated because it's one of the few plants that will actually grow up there successfully? So they actually grow them around their houses because they're beautiful and they flower.
If you grow dandelion, Java Juice Bar will buy them all because we sell them all day.
No commercials here. There'll be no cheap commercials through our meeting. Point of order, city manager.
Are you guys through yet?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll save my comments, then.
Let's continue, please.
The document looks at materials and construction types. One of the things that we do emphasize in our department, this is both a historic preservation standpoint as well as Land Development Code, is that if you choose a style, be true to that style, be consistent with its materials and the construction methodology from that particular architectural style. And that is carried forward regardless of whether it's a contemporary style, a more traditional style, or replication or reconstruction of an older style. We do encourage public art and murals, so that's addressed in the guideline book. We deal with roofs and how they are articulated, signage, which is an important thing. We will be bringing forward at some point probably another update to our sign code. This does not overrule or outdate anything that's already in our sign code. Street and sight lighting. We have tried to work with the various aspects of the city to come up with a standard for streetlights in the city on a major thoroughfare, and Electric Utility has been very supportive of that. So we will probably end up with three different types of street lighting, depending on the type of street, the width of the street, and whether it's emphasizing lighting for traffic or the pedestrian. Sustainability, which is already feathered through our Land Development Regulations and our Comprehensive Plan, is also embraced here in the design guidelines.
Matt, Matt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. Commissioner Robinson?
I was going to, move you right along, but shade trees are fantastic in residential areas. A lot of the commercial pictures you're showing, shade trees and signage and lighting are sometimes in conflict, and it has to be dealt with very carefully, delicately. Sustainability, show the sustainability slide. Can I envision the casino park property parking lot being electrified by its own solar field in its parking lot?
That's a question we'll bring up with the Electric Utility Director, but this is the thoroughfare plan.
Then we wouldn't have to run a tie line over there. It would just be sustainable solar power.
Except at night, unless we can get an artificial sun to run the...
Storage.
Oh, wow. That's expensive.
With enough money and time, you can do most anything.
It's an exciting time to be in Lake Worth.
All right.
This is thoroughfare discussion, isn't it?
Windows.
Thoroughfare.
Thoroughfare guidelines.
So there is a plant we're working on. Because the landscape code changes did not move forward, we're going to spend some more time on this and work with Mark and Dave to come up with a broader array of landscaping that be appropriate... to come up with a broader array of landscaping that would be appropriate based on the right-of-way availability of the thoroughfare. There is still a preponderance and request to have shade for pedestrians along most of the major thoroughfares, but there's also, there are also places where certain types of shade trees are not going to work because we don't really have the room for them, or, and so there's emphasis on trying to incorporate native plantings, which may include different types of palms, that if they're clustered or incorporated with the shade trees, do provide shade in a nice pedestrian environment, but also allow you to read the signage from the buildings. So we'll be, be looking at this a little bit more in depth before it comes back to you as a final document.
Vice Mayor?
And I just wanted to make sure that we spend enough time in this area, both the mayor and I had mentioned. Everybody supports shade trees, yes, shade trees, but right place at the right time? What do they look like in 10 years, so we don't have the same issue that we have with the trees on Lake and Luzern?
Maintenance.
And.
Root structure.
Root structure, watering mechanisms, and, you know, also, you know, if we go native, what does that look like too? You know, some of the natives don't, they're not as hardy, they're not, they're not growing as fast, and they're not necessarily going to get to the shade that we need. So if you're putting some of those natives in as an alternative, they may be cheaper upper developer, and then half of your, you know, area is shaded, well shaded, and then half of it, it looks like, you know, some of them don't do it. A lot of the natives just don't produce as well as, as you might want in that area. Other front yards, things like that, where they're slow growing, yes, maybe.
And one of the things we struggle with is that a number of our native plantings, especially deciduous trees, lose all their leaves at the height of the season.
Absolutely.
Even though it's not warm then, they're at their ugliest when all of our visitors are here. So there's kind of an oxymoronic experience there.
Royal poinsettias?
Yeah.
Royal poinsettias, gumbo limbos, frangipani, there's a number of them that just lose their leaves from January to maybe the end of March. So we're taking all of that into context.
Great.
Another thing that I had a conversation with the, the head of the tree board several times and several years ago, we met before and he had brought a list before me, but I don't know where it ever went with the tree board, was when we had done our, I forget when, what is her name, lovely lady, the one who did our, our reports on, on where a city of neighborhoods and where.
Nielsa?
Nielsa, Nielsa. When we did our presentation at the casino building, and she was talking about in the slide presentation about how, when you travel to certain cities, you have memories and sensory, sensory memories of different things as you go through. And I had mentioned that when I went to Chattanooga, that they planted several fragrant trees throughout the whole downtown. And when you went there, especially in specific areas, you just had these aromas everywhere. It was incredible, and it just made the moment in specific areas in historic downtown and things like that. It just added to the whole, we're always looking about visual too, but, you know, keep in mind, there were several natives that he presented to me that, that are, that do have blossoms and blooms different times of the year. We know that there are shrubs. I know when I walked my dog past X house who's got that hedge with the jasmine, and it just, whoa, I mean, it smells like heaven. I want to go by and take my dog every time through that way because they smell that. But that's something to think in if we're planning, you know, holistically for the whole thing. It is something that makes people want to be there and make, and visit there.
The city's already embraced it to some degree, even here at City Hall, you have the Florida magnolia on the, in, at City Hall, which does, is quite fragrant at certain times of the year. But if you notice, that plant, probably, tree probably needs more attention than a typical street tree, because the ones that we were planting on 10th Avenue North by the CRA way back when have not done particularly well. And they don't seem to like traffic fumes and that sort of that thing. So taking all those aspects into account.
But even the hedge line of shrubs in, in public places, like the cultural plaza or in the, you know, some things that will just enhance the experience, but also just, you know, to think about as you're making this list of trees and so on and so.
And fruit trees.
Commissioner Robinson?
Do you have a, a brief definition of thoroughfare?
Well, I, we have designated certain streets in the.
Definition?
The city is not actually classified as streets as such. We use a broader term for major thoroughfare as the larger streets in the city that are, really would be considered our interior collector in other cities.
And gateways.
And they're all, all of our major thoroughfares, it's our county road.
So I'm considering to go back to the map that has our thoroughfare roads, streets, and memorable, they're, they're streets that are going to identify our city, right? That's why we're trying to beautify them, or maintain them in, with some pride.
I think it's the very beginning.
It is.
Oh, wow. Why don't you just look over your book?
I was just looking at it.
I'm getting dizzy a lot more.
My, my point, when you get to it, was that the thoroughfares are our signature roads.
Oh, you had it.
Well, that's not the picture I was looking at, but anyhow, we can see that it ends at the bridge, and, and I'm questioning why we don't, you know, it's Lake and Luzern, and it ends at, at the, at the bridge. Why we don't consider the bridge as a, a visual of our city and have, consider it a thoroughfare to our Central Park on the ocean.
You're not building anything on the bridge or on the, there's no developable land.
But it continues over to our iconic oceanfront property. And so I, I just, you know, I don't know why we don't consider that a thoroughfare.
This is about the developable properties, and there's none along that stretch. This is, these are design guidelines.
Well, we're talking about landscape, we're talking about sustainability and landscaping and signage and.
Right.
And appearance.
On commercial purposes.
And parking, and what we, what we do when we drive over the bridge and, and look at our, our property. I, I want it to be a point of pride, that's all, which is what I would define as a thoroughfare.
Well, I think when you choose to discuss again the future of the beach and considering whatever happens to it, whatever plan or approach is adopted or embraced by the commission moving forward, would include that approach to and from the beach within that context, because that's all under our control versus this document really is established to sort of encourage and provide guidelines and support and direction to private investment on how they treat our right-of-way and major thoroughfares.
It's important how we treat our own as well.
We have more?
You just have two more slides.
I had just a couple of comments at the end.
Do you want to wait till he's done or no?
Yeah, I want him to finish. I'm trying to encourage you.
He needs to pass. You can come back with all the, the things that you've seen all over the world.
You need to throttle down just a minute.
Okay, I can't get this, this last slide up, but it basically gets talking about the recommended materials in streetscape that we would see in the city, and again, it's having a uniform. There we go. I guess it just takes a while. We're looking at with the CRA, a uniformity of street furniture. We already have adopted the way fair, wayfinding and signage program for the city, looking at materials that are appropriate for Florida and the types of architecture that might come in, even if it's a new contemporary style of architecture. So it takes into context all of those types of things. And so that's a very quick overview of the document itself. Again, it is still in a draft. Your comments, I will share with the consultant as we move forward, trying to finalize it to something that can be brought forward through the planning and zoning board and the preservation board, to have recommendation to you from them on its adoption.
I have just one comment, but I'll let the city manager, because he's been waiting so patiently.
Thank you. Just, I wanted to clarify something, because I, I heard the angst from Commissioner Robinson. The design guidelines for federal include all of federal with the exclusion of downtown and the north end. So North Federal from the residential area all the way to Lantana is basically the same sets of guidelines, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The illustrative picture that you used at 13th North and Federal.
I think it's 11th North and Federal.
11th, I apologize. Is an example that could be used anywhere.
Yes.
I think there might be an interest because there is really a focus of trying to get some things on the south end of the city to maybe move this example, even though it's not ignoring the south end. I don't want you to think that this work was anyway disrespectful, but we, no, no, it's not. It's the same guidelines, but we can move it if y'all are okay with it to an example in the south end.
It's the same district, and so that, if that.
Because all, all of federal has these guidelines on it.
Zoning classification. The guidelines would be implemented the same way.
Correct.
Regardless of where they were on federal.
And then I think the other thing that, I heard some collective gasps on the sub-area one, which was the elevated section of I-95 south of Lake Worth Road where the lovely trailer park currently exists. There was a smattering of buildings thrown in there. If you look at them, they're about eight stories on the larger ones I'm looking at.
That's the max, yes.
Okay. So I heard the word high rises and, you know, you got the, I think, will that even get over or up to the I-95 level?
It would overlook probably three levels of it, it would overlook the 95. Keep in mind too, that we do have a charter limit that's 100 feet. The closest we could get to it is in the 90 range, and whether people would want to build a technical high rise, because once a building gets to the point where usable space is above 75 feet, there are a lot of things that kick in that make a building much more expensive. So I, I don't know whether that will ever happen in Lake Worth or not, but we wanted to give an example of someone came in and did a major redevelopment of about 12, 15 acres of a blighted area, what could be incorporated there?
And that's in that pocket, just south of Lake Worth Road, across from Elbodagon to the water.
Yes.
To where it goes back.
It's TOD. It's wide next to the Tri-Rail State.
It's based on the TOD around it. So right now, it's currently the, the mobile home park.
Yes.
And some other properties around there. So I didn't want people to figure this was anywhere else along Lake Osburn, but it was right near that TOD. Okay, those are two things. Is that cool?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to piggyback on the city manager's south end. I understand that that can be anywhere within that district, but we tend to focus on the north end, Dixie Highway, if we can, you know, maybe do some, something, South Dixie Highway, South Federal with some modeling, just as a power of suggestion for, you know, prospective developers and people are looking at, because there are some issues on the south end and as we market it and as we grow and design that.
If y'all are okay, that we'll, we'll shift that to the south.
I would like, I would like that. Now, in addition, just one comment I wanted to make, I went through the whole presentation, looked at everything, very nice job, appreciate everything done. It's interesting going from the last agenda item to this agenda item, because when I look at the types of buildings that are representative or the types of materials that are represented in here, I see a very modern palette of everything, and we have, you know, historic sections. That's why I just wanted to bring up the dichotomy of the two agenda items. We're looking at this and then looking back to, to what we have, I think that the one thing that we've been pretty consistent on is, when you talk about building heights or like versus like and, and creating within that area, I just see a lot of, now where there's no construction or torn down buildings and different things, I mean, obviously, we have many styles. We talked about the 10 styles or whatever, 11 styles that we did have, architecture-wise. I just want to make sure that it's not, we're only pushing contemporary-looking buildings, but we're also pushing buildings that will, you know, that will blend with the historic architecture of, you know, of our city too. I, I just don't want people, every single picture I looked at in here was all contemporary. I didn't see one thing except for maybe a couple of the examples of Key West style on Federal Highway. I think that was all that, that was in there. So I just would want to say, I would want people.
I can ask the consultants to try to get, it's tough in South Florida to get, to get examples of newer architecture that's recently built that is not of a more contemporary flair. There's quite a bit of respectful, traditional-style architecture in Coral Gables, but the mixed juice that's there, the scale of it is well, way out of whack with what would be appropriate for Lake Worth. And so we spend a lot of time looking at some sub-areas of Miami Beach, Allison Road, Biscayne Boulevard, some areas in Fort Lauderdale, which would have buildings that are contextually, their mass and bulk would be sympathetic to our historic styles and sizes, but almost all of it is a very contemporary flavor. But I'll ask them to try to find some other examples of more traditional-looking architecture or even Mediterranean.
Yeah, because I mean, you, you see a lot of what was built here in the 90s and early 2000s, which were more the Mediterranean-style townhomes and, and mixed-use pieces that sort of go up there. So I mean, I think we have an idea for that, but I think there's been a lot of really positive architecture that's been done in most recent years for new buildings that really blend in with traditional types of settings. And I understand, again, that we have contemporary buildings, you know, and I'm not adverse to contemporary buildings, I just, you know, I don't want all of a sudden see, hey, all new construction looks like South Beach. You know, that's not the community that we are, so I would want all manners reflected a little bit if we could.
Okay.
Real, real quick. William, how does the focus event play into this as far as designs? Will it complement this? Is it something separate?
Well, it's, it's, answer is kind of both. What we did with our envision Lake Worth event for the 29th is challenge people to look at 10 sites across the cultural arts district. There's some that are east of Federal Highway, there's some downtown, or sort of downtown, and there are ones that are west of Dixie, and ask them to look at the parameters that are allowed under the land development regulations as well as the comp plan, and show us what your vision would be. There are criteria that, how does it fit in contextually? Is it in harmony? Does it support what's already there? Does it max out the code? Is it financially feasible? Why do you feel like it would be appropriate new development or investment in Lake Worth? And when we get them in, whether we get a lot or a few, we'll review those and see how they would support our vision of the city. And what can be done is that we, like with the document that Mark explained, that I've had, asked them to all be submitted in a very similar format, so they could actually be slipped in the back of this, as here is an example of an array of studies beyond what we've already had done, of different things that could happen in Lake Worth.
So we might get some new energy outside the box, funky thinking.
Well, there's some, I know that there's some students who want to submit. There's one firm, I'm not overly familiar with them, in Palm Beach, who would like to submit something for all 10 sites. There, I know a couple of architects who are affiliated with the University of Miami, who have said they would submit something. So I'm anxious to see what, what we'll get. Many of the people who have voiced some interest in submitting something are not overly familiar with Lake Worth and haven't done work here. And so it might be interesting to see what an outside person thinks about Lake Worth in the context that it, we are a unique little town that's different from anything else on the East Coast, from, say, Cocoa Beach to Key West.
I'm looking forward to it.
I just wonder what they're going to call historic 50 years from now.
You.
They'll call me dinosaur.
Something I want to make a distinction on, because Kathleen didn't make it overly clear, historic is any building that's over 50 years old or older, per the Secretary of Interior Stand, National Park Service. Whether it's significant or not is the next threshold. You can have a 50-year-old building that was always, looking always crap, and it's still historic, but we're not really embracing its preservation. And so keeping.
Yeah, I know, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you for that. But it was funny, because when I was looking through the pictures, I said, I bet you when they built, you know, the Forum Building, some Palm Beach lakes Boulevard, those were probably like the rage back when they were built, right? Because they were very architecturally different and, and whatnot, but now, not so much.
Well, probably the best example of that conflict was the downtown West Palm Beach Library, which designed by a contemporary of the Kennedy Center in DC, and they originally had very similar aspects to them. And people hated that building from the time it was actually finished and spent years taking bits off of it. If you saw it today, we probably think it would be a superb example of contemporary architecture. It had a really cool pop arc frieze that was very Andy Warhol-esque around the top. It had slender columns, it was raised up on a water base, but it's gone. And so buildings have to also be appreciated through time, and that's, if they make it 50 years old or older, there might, might be something that is embraceable, lovable about that building, even if it's not the most attractive one in the world.
Well, when you look at a building like the cultural, you know, the cultural council building, you know, that's a building that is old, but its architecture has stood the test of time and is actually, it melds in perfectly with today as well, you know what I mean? It's nothing, it's some, some things that are so intricate and delicate and yet nothing too extreme in regards to how it is, it just blends in perfectly in the downtown environment. Even though it's different than the Key Westy building next to it, and this, that, it works somehow. Sorry, that wasn't a question, an observation.